Today is May thirteenth, two thousand twenty. We are convening a regular Board of Education meeting of the Cogah Heights local schools. Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Suchaki.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here. Four present, one absent. I'd like to welcome everyone on behalf of the board to, I'd like to welcome our students, staff, parents, and interested community members to this evening's Board of Education meeting. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill one nine seven in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. That bill grants permissive authority to define state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December one, two thousand twenty, or during the period of the COVID-19 emergency, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meetings, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, methods of public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The board believes that it has satisfied all of HB one nine seven's criteria to hold today's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the board meeting is available to review on our school district's website. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
Uh, so moved.
Mr. Naaman moves.
Second.
Ms. Etter seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes four zero. Comments from the public. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues, and is now asking the public to email comments that it might have otherwise provided during the public comments portion of this meeting to the following email address: info@cuyhts.org. The board will strive, will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. With that background, I turn the meeting over to Mr. Muchio.
Uh, thank you, President Dobbins. Just have a couple of recommendations for tonight. First recommendation for A, motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty regular meeting and May fourth, two thousand twenty special meeting as found in attachment T-one. Item five, A, motion to approve the May two thousand twenty-five-year forecast as found in attachment T-three. And we have, uh, five B, motion to approve purchase orders over five thousand as found in attachment T-two.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Suchaki moves. I'll second it. Mr. Dobbins seconds. Is there any discussion?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of things. Wanted to go to five A, the May five-year forecast. Um, I have a timeline up that we went by, so if we look at that, we can see that number one was the review of the draft, May two thousand twenty-five-year forecast, um, which we did during our April twenty-second Board of Education meeting. Uh, we reviewed the, uh, May five-year forecast draft with the Finance Committee, April twenty-third. Uh, then we had two revisions after that. The first revision was for the Chase and Chat collective bargaining agreements, which were Board of Education approved for twenty-two. And the second revision was for Governor Dewine statewide three hundred million dollar budget cuts to K through twelve, uh, state foundation aid due to COVID-19 public health crisis. Right now, we're at number four, which is approving during our May thirteenth Board of Education meeting that we have. Um, so we went over in depth the forecast at the twenty-second Board of Education meeting. Uh, so there's not too much to go in depth into tonight. Um, did anybody want me to go through the five-year forecast or?
Can you just show where you were made that, the revision we talked about?
Yes.
Just open it up and just show, show us the, uh, the two revisions, uh, that we talked about.
Absolutely. Um, so we have our five-year forecast here, and the revisions will be to line, uh, three point zero one zero Personnel Services. So this was the, uh, first revision where we, uh, increased the amounts due to the Chat and Chase, uh, collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
For Board of, uh, approved. And then the second revision would be to line one point zero three five unrestricted state aid. So that amount reduced, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty and fiscal year two thousand twenty-one by approximately two hundred and thirty-one thousand both years. Uh, that's the amount that, uh, Governor Dewine has announced as far as a reduction that we're going to see for this year.
Okay, so you, we've already taken the two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars off of that line for this year and two thousand, in two thousand twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me, um, go into the notes. This will be a easier way to see. Come up to this page here, which is page twenty-eight. I'll make it a little bigger. What we have here is we have our fiscal twenty estimated amount of four hundred twelve thousand, and then four hundred twelve thousand for fiscal twenty-one. And we're thinking we're going to fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, so we took the difference between fiscal twenty-one to fiscal twenty-three, and that's four hundred and ninety-three thousand.
So, Matt, just for clarification, we, we keep talking about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, but in the difference line, it shows two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred.
Right, right. So when we come here, what happened was the governor, and I have the two hundred and thirty-one thousand right here on this page, which is page twenty-seven right above.
Okay.
And we can see that this is the amount that we were looking at as far as our foundation as of the March number one payment. It's always going to change a little bit as the payments, uh, carry on, but we have to take out a certain amount for the Career Tech and Economic Disadvantage funding, which is classified as restricted grants and aid.
Oh, okay.
Four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then we have our two hundred and thirty-one thousand here that was reduced for Governor Dewine's announced budget cuts.
Yeah.
We have our amount down here. Um, now this is twenty-four-one thousand. It's a little bit different here only because the actual was six hundred and fifty-nine thousand as opposed to six hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, and I'm using the June number two, so there's always some small adjustments at year end.
Yeah.
That accounts for that.
Okay.
Right, the eight thousand.
It wasn't a big difference. I was, but thank you for clarifying that because now I see it there.
And what's not reflected in there is the CARES Act money. We're going to get about sixty thousand back, uh, when the CARES Act is approved, and that's going to go directly into that, that unrestricted grant aid. That's federal money that has not been approved yet. We'll get sixty thousand back there, and, and just know that in the next two weeks, there's going to be legislation presented that will get additional money back for us. Matt Dolan has kind of put a group together to try and, uh, uh, convince the governor and get some legislation passed to, to even that out a little bit because, uh, you saw my email that I sent out, so I think that, that, that kind of explains it. But Matt, Matt has been very supportive, and, uh, we're hopeful. Uh, I, I was on the phone with the Alliance for about an hour on Saturday, um, and, uh, um, hoped, hopefully see a change in the next two weeks or so. Some districts have to pay back. Some districts owe the state money right now, uh, based on what happened. And we lost forty-two point seven percent of our funding. Independence lost over fifty percent of their funding. And, and, and there's, uh, uh, Strongsville, Beachwood, uh, one other district that actually owe the state money right now based on the cuts.
That's crazy.
And actually, we are going to owe the state money with the cuts, um, and I'll get into that, too. Uh, kind of wanted to show how this tied in. So this is the eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for the Career Tech and Economic Disadvantage. That's actually in our restricted line, which is on the next couple of pages that we have here. So that was eight thousand, uh, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, which we have right down here in our subtotal. So that actually gets classified as restricted grants and aid instead of unrestricted grants and aid. Um, back to what, uh, Tom was talking about, how the sixty-one thousand we're going to see in, um, from CARES Act money. That may come in, but it may be classified as a four hundred or five hundred, uh, accounting fund. So we still have to see the, um, the specifics on that. If it's not classified as one of those funds, it would be restricted, uh, grant, grants and aid, which would flow through on this line, on one point zero four zero. If it does have to get classified as a four hundred or five hundred fund, we would not include that in our five-year forecast because it's only showing general fund, but we still have to see the specifics on that. As far as paying back, uh, funds to the state, um, we get foundation money twice a month, and we get approximately fifty thousand each month. So the state's going to take out what every school district owed, or, you know, has coming in the last three payments. So it's going to be the May second payment, the May number two payment, and then we have the June number one and June number two payments. So if we get about fifty thousand every month of state aid, so we have fifty thousand for June, and then half of that for the May second payment, the number two payment we're going to receive in May, that's seventy-five thousand. Now, we know that that payment, uh, announced from Governor Dewine is two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So we know that seventy-five thousand is going to be taken out, so we're going to have to, potentially, we have one of two ways to go. We can either cut the state back a check for that difference to have it be reflected on the books in fiscal twenty, or I believe the state can deduct in fiscal twenty-one. My thought would be, um, to have us cut a check back to the state so everything's reflective in the, in the correct timeframe. So fiscal twenty is when the cuts went into place. We would want all of the two hundred and thirty-one thousand to show up on our books in fiscal twenty, which in essence would have us cutting a check back to the state.
Man, I'd agree with that approach. I think that's the right thing to do because that, that actually, that, that puts it in the right, um, the time period.
Right.
It's timing for the right time period. I agree with that.
But it's unfortunate that, you know, we would have to, you know, cut a check back to the state, um, for a portion, and Tom was talking about that earlier. The letters. Yep.
Matt, and, and actually to Tom as well, um, these, these, um, cuts to the education funding, uh, moved very, very quickly, and I, and I just want to confirm that, that these cuts, um, are final cuts and that there is no, and I know there may be something in the future, but that at least for this, uh, until June thirty, that these are final cuts and that we, we literally, uh, moved in all districts to, to, uh, budget for these cuts, that they're not preliminary or proposed.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. As of today, with the information I have presented, um, before me, um, correct. These cuts are finalized.
Okay, great.
See, the difference was, and Matt, Matt had sent out a calculation after the, the initial, what they were talking about initially, you know, ten thousand, what, well, what that, um, what they did is they kind of went, they, they then factored in carryover and some other things, uh, to, uh, to the cut system so that really wealthier districts, and they classify as a wealthy district, and again, you saw in my email, I won't go into a lot of detail of that, but, uh, um, got hit harder because Cleveland was originally supposed to lose fifteen point six million and ended up losing only five million, and if they'd have gone straight across with the cuts. And if you saw the article, and thank you for sending it to me, Mr. Dobbins, uh, Eric Gordon had even stated that, uh, the cuts were not going to cause, uh, a dramatic impact to their overall budget. Um, so it, uh, they were disproportionate, uh, without question, and, uh, so, uh, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, they can get his ear, so.
Correct. Um, just expanding on what Tom is saying, so, um, when the, when the governor initially announced three hundred million dollars worth of cuts happening in the state aid, um, I ran some numbers and, uh, went through, and when I was crunching those numbers, I applied the three point seven percent decrease to every school district's state aid. And for us, three point seven percent of the five hundred and forty-two thousand that we receive, um, the approximate amount, would be about twenty thousand dollars. That's about three point seven percent. Um, the next day or two days from that, um, we saw a calculation that had, um, wealth factored in as well as carryover balance, um, what Tom's talking about, and that took that twenty thousand, three point seven percent up to forty-two percent and two hundred and thirty-one thousand. That's where the allocations come into play with the wealthy districts that, um, we see happening. Wow.
It's pretty bad.
Matt, this is Joe. Actually, just I want to, can, can you expand on, on what the, um, the CARES Act reimbursements are, we're going to get? Is that just basically due to that? I know that's the, the emergency funds for, for, um, from the government. Is that basically due to, like, individuals that are not working at full capacity? And is it also reimbursement for, like, things like added technologies and those types of things as well?
Correct. There are certain restrictions that we have to abide by for those funds, um, that come to us, and they were allocated via the same method as title funds, uh, to the district. So our amount that we're receiving is approximately sixty thousand. So we're going to see that flow through, uh, be recognized, I believe, in fiscal twenty. Um, and there are certain restrictions that we have to abide by, uh, for those funds that we have.
Okay.
And it's all related to the COVID-19 public health crisis for those restrictions.
Right.
Are we going to have any trouble meeting those restrictions?
No, we're already doing, we're already, that, that's, that's a slam dunk for us. We, there'll be no issue with any of that at all.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and this forecast is just a snapshot in time. So, you know, when we do this again in November, um, we could see, you know, a drastic change one way or the other, depending on, you know, the circumstances that happened between now and November with everything going on.
Okay.
Going to our purchase orders over five thousand. I'll bring up our lead sheet. We have five for tonight. We have the first one with CDWG. It's a virtual server for fourteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars. We have Neonet, two hundred and ten Chromebooks, and that's a split between our refund permanent improvement tech fund and five ninety-nine Title IV, uh, our grant fund, Martin Public Seating Additional Lockers at the Elementary School, twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Number four is DNR Carpet Service. Uh, that's the removal and replacement of kindergarten and one additional elementary classrooms carpeting. Uh, that's twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. Number five is the Monarch School for Autism. Um, that's the summer extended school year services for thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I have one, one question on that, too, Matt. So like, the, the, the Chromebooks that we're, we're purchasing, and, and I, I understand that, you know, we, we have a replacement program and everything, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Clarus, but it's like, I wonder if, if, um, are we going to, because of the, uh, because of COVID and actually be, are giving those, uh, Chromebooks to, to students to use, um, somewhat, are we going to have to replace those quicker or sooner?
Hold on, let me bounce. That's a Dr. Clarus.
Yeah, it, Mr. Naaman, it just depends. Um, the, the, the Title IV grant money, we, we were, because of the, the COVID situation this spring, um, they allowed use of technology for, out of that Title IV grant money. Um, and so, and so we took advantage of that to purchase some additional Chromebooks. Uh, to answer your question, it just depends on, we, we've lent out about a hundred and a hundred and ten Chromebooks. Um, some of those were our newer Chromebooks because some of the new older Chromebooks couldn't support some of the programming at the elementary. Um, so it just depends. I, I, I don't anticipate it, um, dramatically impacting our rotation, our, our cycle in terms of replacement. Um, but there might be an anticipation, or we, we might anticipate some additional purchases necessary. Um, I think we're in a good place in terms of, as we went through this, uh, this spring, we kind of determined parents were working at home. We had multiple kids in the home, so we'd had to loan out some more Chromebooks than typically we would need to. Um, I think we're in a good place. I, if, if we get into a position in the fall where we have to re, re, replay this in some form, I anticipate between a hundred and hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks that will need to loan out to families to help with the situation. So we might, we might have to replace those some a little bit sooner just because of the wear and tear. I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate a big, big impact.
But, but these, these Chromebooks, then, these will replace the ones that you said couldn't be loaned out because they're, they're, um, they can't run the, some of the programs at, at that point. So, so that, that's, these, these new ones will replace those ones that don't have the, the adequate capacity or the, or, um, or actually, I guess, the operating system that you need.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, these, the Chromebooks we're purchasing are part of our normal replacement cycle. So this is, this would have happened no matter what. If there was a regular spring or a COVID spring, it would have happened no matter what.
Gotcha. Now, now, though, well, all those Chromebooks that, that can't run some of that software, will they be all replaced then with this, with this, or is there still some more that need to be, to be, uh?
We're still, we're still in a replacement cycle, um, but, but a lot of those are, are dispersed among, uh, in the different departments or the, you know, within the building. So if we know that, that, that if we, if we do have to loan out, we, we have to use some of the newer versions so kids have the, uh, correct operating system. Um, but we're going to also look at maybe keeping a little bit more in reserve. So even though we're going to replace these Chromebooks, um, with this new rotation, we're going to, we're going to hold some, we're going to increase our reserve a little bit just in anticipation that our need may be a little bit more next year in, in terms of, of sending devices home.
Yeah, I think that's a great plan. So, so thank you for the explanation. I greatly appreciate it. I think it's a great plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
And that would conclude my, uh, discussions for recommendations for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Muchio and everyone who participated. Uh, with that behind us, then I think we could, uh, Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll and vote on the treasurer's consent agenda?
Mr. Suchaki.
Uh, aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes four zero. Mr. Muchio, treasurer's business?
And just had one, uh, item for discussion I wanted to point out. Um, so we, um, are working on our state software redesign migration. So we're going from our current state software to the new state software redesign, and we began our payroll parallel. So we did it for the five eight two thousand twenty payroll, which was last Friday, and all that payroll parallel means is that we completed the five eight two thousand twenty payroll in both our current state software as well as completing it in the new redesigned system. So we're scheduling to do that about four payrolls just to make sure the new redesigned software perfectly matches with our current software. We're talking, um, employees' salary schedules, employees' deductions, um, the correct salary amounts, the amounts going to the correct bank, making sure that all the correct banking information's in, so we don't have a direct deposit that would get bounced back. So we're going to run that about four times just to make sure everything's correct before completely switching over from the current state software to the redesign. So we're going to be doing it about four times in both softwares, and then once we feel confident that fifth time, we're going to go straight to the redesign and complete it. Uh, we're also working on our accounting side, so we're doing dual processing as well on that side. So we're cutting checks through our current system, but we're also posting those checks in the redesigned software so that both softwares record the same check information on it. Uh, it's our plan to dual process for the accounting side the rest of May as well as June, and our plan is to close the fiscal year in both softwares, the current state software and the redesign. So we have two sets, you know, the new and the old. Uh, both, you know, data points should match up in each. Uh, and then going forward, seven one, with the beginning of fiscal two thousand twenty-one, we're going to start exclusively only using the redesigned software going ahead. So we have about two months that we're looking at where we're dual processing on both sides just to make sure everything aligns, that we're comfortable with it before falling, hopping, hopping over to the, uh, new redesigned software, seven one. So it's a bit stressful, I'm going to say that, uh, duplicating everything and making sure everything matches in both systems. Um, but it's, uh, you know, that's the process we have ahead of us, and, you know, we're looking at two months to do it. Uh, I think two months is a good timeframe. I think Neonet kind of maybe feels it's longer than maybe what's anticipated, but I just want to make sure that we're completely comfortable, you know, operating in the redesigned system and that everything aligns up perfectly and matches. I don't, it's a lot more costly time-wise if we have to fix a mistake as opposed to taking this time to make sure everything's correct going into it. So that's kind of my, uh, thought process going on.
How's the initial evaluation of the new software?
Um, it's, uh, I think the old software, I, I'm very much quicker in the old software only because I've been using it for, you know, close to ten years through my audit days as well as working as the Assistant Treasurer. So I, you know, I know that software backwards and forwards. The new software, um, you know, I, I like certain aspects of it. Other aspects, it's going to take more time to get accustomed to. Um, but I think that's, you know, as it would be with anything new coming out. So I'm excited.
I like the, what, what you're doing there, Matt, on, on running parallel for a couple of months. Um, what kind of controls are in place to make sure that we don't accidentally double everything?
Right. Um, well, we're working with Neonet, um, on everything we do. So Yalika just completed two days' worth of full-day trainings today and yesterday with Neonet on the payroll parallel, uh, as we're going forward. So she's not going to enter the final steps where we would send money to the bank, for example, for the full payroll. So she's not completing the very final steps of actually sending, you know, the, the full amount, you know, the file, uh, the knock file to the bank. Um, for our accounting side, we're only processing checks, you know, currently in our current state software. So we're not even using any of the, you know, the, the final application that we have in the redesign. So it's, it, it takes a lot to create the, you know, what would be there to be, you know, posted correctly, but we're not, you know, we're not operating in that other system when it comes to clicking the buttons to actually process those checks. So everybody's on the same page with that.
Okay. So have you given any thought to doing one more run after you switch over? Or do you think for two ahead of time or enough?
Oh, yeah, we, we completely left the door open. So, um, yeah, if we feel we need more time after our initial plan, absolutely. We can take as much time as we want. I, I spoke with, uh, Neonet today, um, Matt Goodover, the CEO there. So if we need more time dual processing, not a problem. We absolutely can. I just wanted to have kind of, you know, an end goal in place to say, you know, this is, you know, just our initial plan, you know, to close out the fiscal year six thirty in both softwares and, you know, seven one start in the redesign going forward. But again, if we need more time, if, you know, if one side of it, you know, isn't comfortable fully, oh, we'll, we'll do it as long as we need to stay comfortable, so it's not a problem.
I guess that's what I wasn't really asking. What I was trying to get at was, will you parallel again in July? Let's just make it up for the moment. Would you parallel again in July, only this time make the new, this new software live, and then just validate on the old side one more time that it's looking good after you release it or before you release it?
That's a good point. Yeah, that's something we can look at. I hadn't thought about that, but that's a good point.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a good idea or not. I'm just throwing it out on the table.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely take a look and talk to Neonet on that, and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And that's, uh, all I have for tonight.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Muchio, for those updates. We appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Dobbins?
Okay, Superintendent's Business. A, motion to approve a revision to the two thousand nineteen twenty school calendar by changing the last day for students to May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. B, motion to approve the rescheduled dates of the eighth grade Washington DC trip for the class of two thousand and twenty-four to September twenty-second through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, per the attached itinerary, which I see is not attached. I apologize. Um, uh, C, motion to approve spring sports supplemental contracts to be paid in full for two thousand and twenty season with the exception of the position as spring sports faculty manager, which will be paid at fifty percent. Agreements, contracts, and memberships. Uh, motion to approve the attached agreement with the Educational Service Center Northeast Ohio for extended school year services for the summer of two thousand and twenty. B, motion to approve a task agreement with UCP of Greater Cleveland for extended school year services at Camp Leaf Bridge during the summer of two thousand and twenty. Uh, C, motion to approve the attached agreement with LLA Therapy for Student Therapy Services during two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. D, uh, motion to approve the attached agreement with BC Technologies Final Forms for Student Staff Management System during the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. E, motion to approve the attached agreement with Frontline Technologies for Absence Management, Human Resource Software and Integration during the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Personnel resignations. Uh, A, motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Nancy Wanyerka as a middle school teacher effective at the end of two thousand nineteen twenty school year after thirty-three years of service to the Cogah Heights School District. B, motion to approve the resignation of Tracy Deal as Secretary to the Assistant Superintendent and Substitute Teacher Coordinator effective at the end of two thousand nineteen twenty school year. And employment of certified staff, motion to approve the reemployment of Lindsay Maisick Andreski on a on a continuing certified staff contract as a middle school teacher effective two thousand and twenty twenty one for the adopted salary year. B, motion to approve reemployment of Patrick Miles Patterson on a continuing certified contract as a high school teacher effective two thousand and twenty twenty one school year per the adopted salary schedule. C, motion to approve the reemployment of certified personnel per the attached list on a one-year limited certified staff contracts for the two thousand and twenty twenty one school year per the adopted salary schedule. Twelve, employment of classified staff. Motion to approve employment of Tracy Deal as administrative assistant to the superintendent on a two-year exempt staff contract effective July one, two thousand and twenty to June thirty, two thousand and twenty two per the attached contract. Thirteen, employment of supplemental positions. Motion to approve employment of Kara Kovacs as the district substitute teacher coordinator for a one-year supplemental contract for two thousand and twenty twenty one per the adopted salary rate. Employment of substitutes and staff as needed. Motion, A, motion to approve reemployment of Linda Mayer as a long-term substitute for two thousand and twenty twenty one school year per the adopted salary schedule MA step two. B, motion to approve reemployment of Kalen Ackery as a long-term substitute gifted intervention specialist for two thousand and twenty twenty one school year per the adopted salary schedule BA step two upon completion of the subbing assignment or return to her duties as a teaching assistant. C, motion to approve employment of Eric Jendrej as a long-term substitute teacher on a one-year limited teaching contract for two thousand and twenty twenty one school year. BA step one, after sixty days of employment for the daily substitute rate, contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI background check. And D, motion to approve the employment of the attached summer maintenance aides for two thousand and twenty. I ask that those items be, I submit those for your approval.
Yeah. So may I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
I'll move, so moved.
Mr. Namon moves.
Second.
Mr. Suchacki seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll brush through this stuff. The, the, I discussed with you about, we're shorting the school year up by five days. That's going to give us some additional time with the staff in the building to, to close records out and, and, and shut the building down for the summer. They've done an outstanding job with, with the online education and the time is that, that will, that will help us to close the year out. That'll give some additional time. Thanks to Ted for working on the DC trip and getting that, so those kids don't lose that trip. The something, uh,
Tom, it's the same itinerary too.
It hasn't changed at all. So we had already discussed the supplementals for spring. I've got George online too. George, you want to talk about the potential on the summer camp? We've, we've got three summer camp, summer extended school year programs. I'll let Mr. Burek address those. He's online with us here this evening.
Yes. So we've been working with the state, with the health department, trying to finalize what extended school year is going to look like this, this summer. We've already delayed the start time. Originally, we were going to do it at the beginning of June with UCP. We worked with them last year. It was a very successful program for our students to help, you know, again, keep people in our community rather than ship them out to other places. Our intended plan right now is to work into July to do the twelve day sessions. Obviously, we have some reservations with that since these are our most vulnerable population of students. So we want to make sure that everybody's safe and we're able to, you know, implement any of the programming under the direction of, of the health department. So currently, UCP is working with them to finalize what it's going to need to look like if we're going to run that program. So that's, you know, one of those items that's voted on tonight. The other part, we, we, as a backup plan, we put in place our intervention specialists who work with our small group settings of both elementary, middle school and high school have volunteered to do ESY remotely if we're not able to provide it in-house in the building in July. They've already been working with the students, you know, doing weekly sessions, doing Google meets with, with the students and their parents, and then coordinating our other related service providers with that. So again, we're waiting on guidance with what that's exactly going to look like so that everybody's safe and everybody's being provided with opportunities and they need to be successful working towards IP goals and objectives. And again, like a lot of it's just kind of waiting on government orders and wait and see. But we, we do have plans in place to be able to provide service to those students, whatever way that, that ends up hanging out.
Thanks, George. So essentially, what, what George has put in place for us is that if the health department lightens up some of the restrictions, we can still, we can then follow the IPs. Right now, George has been online multiple times with people around the state. We, we feel like we're in a very good place as far as what we've been able to get done with our, with our special needs population remotely. George reports to me that we're, we're light years ahead of what some other districts are doing right now. And, and I, I think that's reflected. If we weren't, we'd certainly be hearing about it from that group of parents because they won't be bashful about telling us that we're not getting it done with their kids. But those are, you know, we've got those things in place in case things loosen up and we can get that done. So thanks for your hard work on that, George. The final forms is what we use for all of our registration and, and the frontline technologies we use for both our absence system and our, and our, our application system. Resignations, obviously Nancy Wanyerka, I sent that out to you before. Mr. Dobbins had a really good suggestion and I'm going to use a Tom Talks just to recognize our retirees. I'm not going to put anything else on that. I'm going to dedicate one whole Tom Talks to recognizing our, our two retirees and shortly here. That I think that with, with the year ending the way it is, that's the, the best we can do for them. We can't have the regular end of the year reception type thing. Tracy Deal, the resignation from her current position, so she can accept the position as my secretary. And then Lindsay Andreski and Miles Patterson will move on to continuing contracts. They've met all the requirements for that. The reemployment of the certified staff list, we, you know, you've had that in your hands for about a month now and there's not, there's no major, there's no new hires in that list. Those are just rollovers on, on one-year contracts that, that we have to do. Bringing Tracy Deal on as, as, as my administrative assistant, she's excited. She's been in there hammering away, working with Sandy already, trying to get that office in order. So excited about that. Kara Kovacs is going to pick up the, the supplemental contract for the, for the substitute calling. Our, our system does a large portion of that, but once we get into the early morning hours, the system can't do it in a timely fashion. So we have to have somebody for the late call offs. So the teachers that call off in the morning and Kara will handle that. And that's something that Tracy's handled up to this point. Linda Mayer will continue on as our long-term sub in art. Emily Witchy sent me an email this week, her, her, her request for disability is moving forward. She's seen some doctors, so she's awaiting a decision from STRS as far as that's concerned. Kalen Ackery has filled in admirably for us for Mrs. Boswell in the elementary and will continue to do so. Eric Jendrej is going to help us out in the elementary building for some maternity leaves down there. And the summer maintenance aides, there's one, um, Coon is not going to be, he's on the list. So he, he, we just got an email from him today that he's got a summer internship opportunity. So, you know, he won't be working. I don't know which one of the Coon boys that was, Ted. There we go.
David.
David, David, I get them. You put them all next to each other. I'll confuse them every time. So, but that's a good list of, of summer workers that, that we're going to bring on. And actually, we're going to bring them on Friday so we can kind of get going on, button some things up. They're going to help us to kind of close up the building. So any questions on any of those items?
Well, I know that this is an unfavorable comment, but I'm still kind of not sitting really well with the, the coaches and their second payment. And just in light of all of our financial situations, I know I'm in the minority here, but I wonder if, if any of those coaches or any of those supplemental sports, if they would consider not taking the payment. That'd be greatly appreciated in light of the fact that no real practices and no real games were ever played. I don't know. I just, I just feel like with our financial situation. And I get it. I mean, it was do them. But, and I know that they did things online and were in contact with their athletes. But, you know, there was virtually no, there were no games played and there were no real practices, I don't believe. So.
They, they probably, they did practice for some of them two, three weeks. Had never, never to get close to a competition, but they did have practice underway before it was canceled. So.
Okay.
I, I feel have similar thoughts, Maria. I wouldn't just totally disagree with what you said at all. It concerns me as well. I'm glad you brought it up because I wanted a discussion on the record on this one. And the justification, Mr. Evans, if you could put that on the record for us?
Well, we, we had, you know, all those coaches followed through with training plans for their students as much as they permitted to do by the OHSAA. And, and I, I think they've all documented contact with their kids or they've gotten plans out to them. They're doing every, and they're doing everything that they're allowed to do by the state of Ohio at this point in time. So this, this, this was, there is much that I, I hate to use the word victim, but somehow I think that it just comes, it kind of comes out that way. But, and, and again, I, we talked to John Britton about this and, and asked for a recommendation from John because had it been something different, we, we, we probably would have sat down and, and had that discussion. But John's recommendation on this was to, at this point in time, just to, to pay the supplemental.
So what's, what's the total amount of the dollars involved roughly speaking? You know, roughly speaking, how much are we talking about? For this payment?
Matt, I, I think we're, I think we're right just under $2,000, I think is the total amount.
Yeah, the, the, the total amount of the payment is approximately $60,000. So the first half is approximately thirty, so each half is $30,000, but total is $60,000.
So what we're, what we're talking about?
Is that just the spring or is that just spring sports or is that all spring supplementals? Because we have.
Oh no, that's, no, that's spring sports.
Okay.
Spring sports.
So, so we're in, so we're talking about $30,000 roughly?
Yes.
Okay. And when we talk about that as well, we, we receive no revenues either from any of our like track meets or any of the, any of the other sports that we would normally have received money.
All right. We, our revenues in spring sports are minimal, quite honestly.
Minimal, I know, but.
The only, the only two track meets that we charge for are the George Gross, and we might even charge for that and the Kaiga Relays. So that's, we, when we host a conference meet, we don't get to keep that money. And we get a small portion of the district meet when we host that as the host. So.
Well, I see that, I, I see that Ms. Shuker just joined us.
I want to say hi.
Hi.
I'll just make a comment too, like just to add into the conversations. I know, because I have, you know, my son plays sports too. Like I could, I could, I can vouch that basically that the coaches have been, you know, keeping online with, with, with the kids. And they actually did have like a couple of weeks worth of practice before, before the shutdown for COVID. That's one thing. And the other thing is, is that, you know, they've been keeping online, having workout programs, checking in with them on a weekly basis and those types of things too. The other thing that consider, and I don't even know if this is possible, is that can this be covered by the CARES Act? Because, because this is basically, if we're saying that people can't be at full capacity, you know, you could, I think there's reimbursement, I would say at least to the public company of about $10,000 for those that are not working at full capacity for those types of issues. And maybe that could be reimbursed as well.
So there's been enough discussion. I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't consider pulling this off consent and having the board deliberate and discuss it separately. What, what's everyone's thoughts on that? I see one person shaking their head.
Well, I don't think we could discuss it. You have to discuss it in an open forum.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, we're discussing it right now in an open forum. But what I mean is taking it off the consent agenda, if, if there's an interest in doing that or whether we want to keep it on consent agenda.
You're voting on it separately. Just voting on that one motion separately.
I don't care. I'm voting for it. So.
Okay. All right. Well, does, does Ms. Edder or Mr. Suchacki, do you have, do you have a preference? What would, do you have an interest in this staying on consent or being removed and, and voted on separately? I think in fairness to you, we should, we should make that offer.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but I don't have a problem with leaving it in the consent.
You know, I'm, I, I'm just going to reiterate what I said. Maybe we'll just put, put it on the coaches. If they feel like they did work that warrants that payment, maybe there'll be coaches out there that would think that, you know, especially during the circumstance, maybe they would not accept the payment or that's all I'm saying. Maybe, maybe there's a possibility out there that some of the coaches will think that, you know, we'll see the light of our, our financial situation like at this time that was so unforeseen. And maybe they'll voluntarily not, not expect that final payment, that second payment.
Can I just say something too? I know I'm coming in late, but coaches sometimes rely on that money too. It's something that they kind of consider as part of their salary when they're dedicating that time. And again, having two out of my three kids in a, in a spring sport and they're getting the, I don't even know what they're called, tweets, the twitters, the whatever. They're getting the communication from a coach. Coaches didn't know what was going to happen. Nobody knew what was going to happen. So I, I think they should be fulfilled in their payment and we move on, moving forward. You know, and I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate to put guilt on them as far as, oh, if you want to give the money back. And no, I mean, our coaches have worked hard. It's not the season they thought it would be. You know, I, I think as a school board, let's vote on it and move forward. You know, that would be my, my two cents instead of turning it into this long, you know, drawn out kind of thing.
Well, I think it was worth having the discussion because it is a little unusual.
It absolutely is. Did, did Tom talk about like what other school districts are doing since we're all in the same boat?
No, he only. I didn't, no, he didn't address that.
Okay. No, and I don't think it matters what other people are, are doing. It matters what we want to do. No, it doesn't. Well, I'm talking about our situation. I really don't, I don't think it matters.
Well, I think in any decisions that we make, what we've done is we've gotten like local districts and what they've done. We talk, when we talk about, you know, secretarial pay, when we talk about administrative pay, we look around at the local districts around and we see what, what they're doing. So I think in asking, you know, every school district in Ohio is closed down. So what are they doing with their coaches or supplementals, things like that? I think that is something worth asking.
If I could just add to a comment that Mr. Namon made about the CARES Act and its applicability to this situation. The way that, that Joe framed it, I, I wonder whether there isn't some merit or some, some warranting, some further research to see if it would in fact be covered. But even if it isn't, I'm personally not, I, I recognize both sides of this issue. And I'm very concerned about, you know, our taxpayers' dollars being spent wisely. But I, I do think that, that this was totally unforeseen and that, and then that I don't want to put their coaches in a position of being punished for, for doing as much as they can in a very difficult situation. Heard from two parents already who, who indicate that they've received regular updates from the, in communications from the coaches. So I, I don't know what more we can ask of them that they're not, that they're not doing.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Dobbins, this is Joe again. Actually, I, I, I can't reiterate that enough. I mean, I, I know that some of my, my, my kids' friends also run track and everything. And I think it dates too from the track coaches. They have a workout schedule, same with the baseball coach. I mean, I, I think, I think it's, 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 it's the right thing to do for our people. And I, but I do think that we should explore though the CARES Act because I know that in public companies that, that the government's reimbursing up to $10,000 for those people that are not working at a hundred percent capacity. And so that, but they're still paying them their full salaries. And so, and so that, that's something that, that I know the public companies are doing. It's worth exploring. I think it's part of the CARES Act that policy people are able to look at.
I was, I was in a COE program that talked about the CARES Act in another context. And I, and I, I do think the point you're making is relevant. You know, Tom or Matt, would you be able to maybe reach out to John and see if there's been any other question by other districts about whether we might be reimbursed for these losses?
Yeah, I'll absolutely inquire about it now. I'll work through our first green group too to see what, if, if any of them have, have gone down that road and contemplated that. So.
Okay. Well, thank you to all. And Ms. Edder, I do thank you for your, your comments and your thoughts. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
I just, I just know that, I just know from this point forward, we need to more, be more, have more scrutiny with, with everything that we, that has to do with dollars and cents for the district. That's all.
I agree. Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the treasurer or the superintendent's? consent agenda items? If there isn't, then Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passes five zero and let the minutes be noted that Ms. Schuker joined the meeting about what, 7:45?
Sorry, I didn't look at the clock, but that sounds fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Evans, superintendent's discussion?
Yeah. And I, if you look under, yeah, he's got to pull up good, just some updates. Update on the closure due to the virus. And I'm going to try to do this on a weekly basis with the board, at a meeting basis with, with the board as though, because it's ever-changing. Essentially where we're at right now is the, the, the big discussion is the plans for the start of next school year. I was on with 162 other superintendents today, and I, I don't think one of them believes that we're going to be allowed to open up in a regular fashion at the start of next school year. In response to that, what, what I have done is starting to do is Dr. Claris, myself and Jim Whistler met today on a Google meets meeting. I'm going to put together a work group to devise a plan for a reopening should we not be permitted to come back at 100% and explore all kinds of, all options for us in regards to what does that look like educationally? What does that look like transportation wise? What does that look like food service wise? What does that look like in some way or shape or form to try and assist our parents who are back to work and now might be faced with daycare issues if split schedule is the only alternative that the state gives us. So we're going to meet again next week. We're going to put together a group of parents, teachers. I certainly hope I get it, I can get at least one, one board member, hopefully two of you to sit on this as well. And, and we're going to break it down into subgroups, quite honestly, and, and try to focus on those different content areas and, and put a plan in place should we not be able to come back at 100% next fall. I want to make sure that we're ready to hit the ground running. A lot of school districts have pushed back their starting date. I'm, I don't want to do that right now. Some of them in hopes of that by the time that that date rolls around, they'll be able to be 100%. A real, a lot more questions and answers coming from Columbus right now. And a lot of frustration. I, I haven't talked to one superintendent that's not frustrated right now with the, the lack of information. And I keep hearing local control. We had, you know, we had Mercer County Superintendent's on that said, hey, there's six cases in our whole county. Why would we not be allowed to go back full time? But, but there's a number of implications that go with that. And, and, and just know that in a lot of other counties, what I'm hearing is that the, the county health department is being very cooperative with school districts. I will tell you that in our county, whatever Dr. Acton says is what Cogga County is following. There has been no deviation whatsoever from what she has come across and said. And I know that there is some wavering in some other counties based on their leadership. So, and I, I expressed that today during, during that meeting that I know for a fact that our county is not going to vary from whatever doctor, whatever comes from Dr. Acton in this regard. And the governor's kind of taking a hands-off approach to this. And he, and she kind of got him off the hook by extending the shelter in place through the month of June. And I have a real strong feeling that as we press forward on education issues, that will be much the same case. I was really hopeful that they would come out with some daycare recommendations this week because I think we can mirror off of that. Because whatever daycares do, they got it. They've, they're going to have to extend to us. And, and I think one of my colleagues in Cincinnati put it best yesterday in a conference. He said, you mean that, beginning next week, that three of my families can go down to BW threes and all sit at the same table together and eat wings and, and drink pop, but I can't put them in my classroom together unless they're six foot apart. So that's just, that's really kind of a rudimentary look at how frustrated people we are at this point. And, and some of the things that we're hearing out of Columbus are, are not going to make it very easy for us. So my hope is that we explore every possibility with this work group and we come up with a, a plan to put in place so that when that August date rolls around, that we're ready to, to start servicing our kids. And also taking into consideration that, that, that our parents are about done homeschooling. That, that, that probably is not a real viable option moving too far into the future. So we'll work on that. So that, just so, that's coming. So I'll be sending some invitations out of any of you are interested in, in, in being a part of that, please. And again, those all, be all Zoom meetings and, and we'll kind of try and really be cognizant of people's time. And I think that's why I've got, I've got some time left with Jim Whistler because, you know, we didn't have all of our best meetings. So I still have some time that I can use Jim that I'm not going to owe him any money for, or any additional money for. So Jim's does a great job of facilitating and, and I'm excited about what he brings to the table. And Ted and I are, we've already got a Google Doc set up and starting to work on some of that. So.
Hey, Tom, I, I told you I was interested. At Lakewood, that's what we're doing. We're letting our kids out May 20th. And so we have two weeks that we're working as a team, like, like our whole building on coming up with plans for August. So I would love to be part of that.
Excellent.
Ideas that we share.
And it was, it was almost comical because some people are shouldn't, because the state's supposedly is going to reduce the number of standards from like down to like five or six. Well, it, it doesn't make any difference if you reduce the number from 40 to five. When you're teaching math, you can't leave, you can't leave key things out. You, some, so much of what we teach is a progressionary thing. So you can say what you want to about the standards, but we, we still have to teach the subject matter. And, and again, our teachers have been phenomenal. What we've been able to accomplish during this time is far and away exceeds what many, many people in Cogga County have done and around the state. I, I listen to what other people are, it's going on the state. So my hat's off to our families. And I know that there's a little bit of frustration going on now with some of them as we get to the end of the year. Our students, our teachers, everybody's gone above and beyond in this whole process. So I couldn't be more proud of them.
Tom, Tom, actually, this is Joe. I, I'd like to participate too. I have, I have kids in the school and that, that is going to directly impact them as well. I'd like to participate also.
Excellent. Very good. The budget reductions and alliance recommendations on Matt talked to you a lot about that. So I won't go down that. You did see my letter to the governor, Lieutenant Governor. I got that out Saturday. Senator Dolan, as I mentioned earlier, is, is already kind of said he's trying to put a, a work group together. That's a good thing because I think Senator Dolan, I, I know he's very close to the Lieutenant Governor, but I also think that he has the governors there on some issues. So the more Matt pushes for that, the better off that that is. And I, Matt knows that I, I'll support him any way I can. And the, the alliance as well. So that, that's a little update on that. And, and I'm going to close on a, a piece of good information here. I just got an email from OSBA that our, our continuous improvement presentation for next year has been accepted. So everybody get your presentation, someday going to meetings out there that we will be presenting one of the sessions on our best and our continuous improvement plan. I talked to Jim Whistler about that today. I certainly invited Jim to be a part of that with us. And I'm, I'll fill out the information with OSBA and we'll get some details to you as we move forward with that. But I, that's exciting that we're to the point where we can go down there and talk about some of the great things our best committee has done and how that's benefited our school districts. So very happy to, very happy to report that.
That's outstanding. That's great. Really good news.
That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Got to flip over to the agenda. Are there, are there a, moving on to board business and resolutions? There's one on here to attend professional conferences. I don't believe there are any. Let me know if I'm wrong.
Nope.
Yeah.
Number eighteen.
You should have been doing State of the State today. You did it a year ago. You did it a year ago today.
And, and just thanks for mentioning that, Mrs. Etter. I just, they sent out an email. They want to do it, they want to do it virtually. So in June, what the superintendents have asked is let us get through the school year. So the four of us are going to do a virtual panel thing with, and Flash Ferenc is going to moderate it. And, and I know that the chamber really wants to do that because that's, that's their, that's their most highly attended event every year. So April's trying to pull that together. And I was the last one to kind of commit to it. I was going to wait to see what the others were going to do, quite honestly. But I, I'll take the chance to sit next to Ben and take a few shots at him and he'll take a few shots at me. So.
Good luck with that.
Okay. So there is a item here of approval of the board's business, but I don't believe we are, because we can skip past that. So moving on to under item number 19, board discussion. Or is there anything that the board wants to discuss at this point?
Just want to say thanks to everybody for what they're doing to get us through this crazy times. And just want to say thanks to everybody, all our teachers and staff. And especially to you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
And I'll echo that too. I, I think that everybody's doing a fantastic job. And even seeing it from a, from a parent perspective and, and a way that the schools run, come from, you know, you, you and your administration down to the teachers and, and how they, how they're handling the, the classroom work and everything else. It's, it's outstanding. I mean, it's, it's second to none. And then the other thing I wanted to mention too is I just want to, just, just to thank and congratulate Nancy Nierka too. These, my kids have had her school, she's done for the district. This is just outstanding as well. I want to thank and congratulate her on her retirement.
Yeah. I'll add to that because one of my children had her when she was still Miss Miller. So we've known her for a long time. And I had the opportunity to work with her on several occasions as a guest speaker in some of her classes. So I will definitely miss Mrs. Nierka.
I echo those sentiments as well. I believe both of my children had her. So she's a good teacher. She was a good mentor to the other teachers too. And that was really important.
That, that, that really is the part that goes unseen, Mrs. Etter, that she's been our lead mentor for many years. And, and certainly we, we've hired some quality people, but those first couple of years of teaching can be a little bit rocky if you don't have good, good mentors in your building, people that you can go to. And Nancy has been that person for us as long as I've been in the district. And, you know, I said this about Nancy and Dan before, you know, I, I would get the words I need out of my mouth and Nancy and Dan would be the first ones to volunteer. Whatever, and whatever it was, it, you know, they were always first in line. Tough, tough people to replace. Quality people. The, the kind of people that you build your organization on.
And how blessed are we to have had them at our district?
Absolutely.
Is there, are any of the board committees active or any reports to provide to the board? Finance committee, is there, did we speak about that last meeting?
We went over the five-year forecast.
That's, okay. All right. Are there any other discussion items for the board committee reports or other comments?
Just on a CVCC update, as we've talked before, they're in the middle of, midst of a four-year facility upgrade. This is year two. And because of the shutdown, of the early shutdown, they're starting that project early. It starts up Monday.
Gary, any indication about what the, the cuts are going to, because the, the governor didn't see any, I, I know the non-publics were not affected by the cuts. Any, what kind of hit did the career center take as far as the governor's cuts, if any?
I, I believe they did not get any cuts because of some overlap with federal funding. And I don't recall the detail right now, but if they would cut the career centers, they would lose some federal funding.
Okay.
That's my, that was my understanding. I can get you the actual detail on that if you'd like.
So they couldn't, and I was the Perkins, Perkins funding locked them into the, the inability to make cuts to them. I, that, that would, that would make sense. Okay.
Right. Right. So there are no.
Very good. Are there any future agenda items that people would like to discuss this evening? Okay. Hearing none, let's move on to other informational items, 22A. It should be noted the board of education members received their agendas, so they refer to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings, all at 7:00 PM and the following dates, May 27th, June 10th, June 24th, August 12th, and August 26th. And I believe we're still not certain as to whether we're going to schedule a meeting for sometime in July.
I thought we were going to, just based on everything with the COVID.
Okay. It, yeah, like, okay. So these are our regular meetings that we had passed back in January at the organizational meeting, and we may schedule a special meeting in July. Thank, thank you. With that as background then, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session. I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G1 for the purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of personnel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Souchaki seconds. Any discussion? None? Mr. Muchio, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. It is 8:06 PM and we are adjourning to executive session. No action will be taken following reconvening. Okay. We are reconvening. Is everyone here? One, two, three, four, five? Yeah. We are reconvening from executive session. The time is 9:42 PM. Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll please?
Mrs. Etter?
And I'm here.
Good.
Mrs. Schuker?
Here.
Mr. Souchaki?
Here.
Mr. Naaman?
Mr. Naaman? Joe? You're on mute.
He's not on mute.
Oh, okay.
Now he's on mute.
No, he's not.
Okay. Can we just say he's waving and?
If you're here, thumbs up.
Blink twice if you're not in a safe situation.
You just went counselor mode on it.
Mr. Naaman's here.
Okay. Mr. Dobbins?
Present. Five present, one absent. It is 9:43 PM. We have a motion for adjournment. Second by Mr. Naaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We're adjourned. It's 9:43 PM.